Yeah, so how did we get here tonight? We've heard the calls. We've seen the emails. We've seen the feedback. And we wanted to provide this as an opportunity in this venue for us to provide this discussion and this information and also have it an opportunity for you to ask questions. We're hoping that once you learn what we know as far as what we can and can't do, that it'll bring some clarity and it'll bring some understanding on why you call on a situation, we go out, make contact, and then leave. How come nothing happened? Well, hopefully, we can clarify that tonight. We understand that this is a complex situation that is not going to get solved overnight, and it brings a lot of emotion to the table. We hear you. We understand, and we try to take an approach of compassion, accountability, but also try to resolve a situation. All right? Let's go to the next slide. All right. What do we expect to get from tonight? Expectations. What do you expect to get? I hate to burst anyone's bubble, but I'm not going to tell you the end-all-be-all cost and clearance for this problem. This is much bigger than the Brentwood Police Department, but we have many ways that we face this, and we combat some of these issues and help offer resources and services to our unhoused population. So what you can expect to get, I kind of already briefly touched on. An understanding of the laws and the procedures that we have to follow when we address a situation, and hopefully, an understanding to be able to communicate back and forth with us. Couple of ground rules. As I said, this will invoke a lot of personal emotions, and so I ask that you have an open mind. I've been doing this since 2014 as the homeless liaison for our department, and I've heard and I've spoken, maybe some of you in this room, but people in the community from both ends of the spectrum. People that are yelling at my ears saying, "I'm not doing enough to help them," to people that are yelling at my ears saying, "I'm not doing enough to get rid of them." Well, we fall right in the middle, right? We want to help them, but we also want to hold them accountable if something's not right and we need to fix this situation. So we're going to get into that. But please have that open mind, and please let your emotions stay at the door. Don't bring your emotions into the situation. We're just here to present facts and be as transparent as we can with you. Some of it, as we get going, is going to sound like doom and gloom, but we're going to bring it back. I'm not going to leave you here with, "I can't do anything. My hands are tied." No, that's not our approach at Brentwood PD. We look for innovative ways to provide police services and resources to our community, and that's every member of our community, to you sitting here, to those out on the street. All right? So we're looking for that. So just keep that open mind with us. All right. So as you can see, I'm up here yapping. For those that have not met me, my name is Chris Peart. I'm a lieutenant with the Brentwood Police Department, currently assigned to the patrol division, and I've been with the department for 18 years. Now, as you can see to my left, we have a sergeant, an officer, and a community service officer. So when I started this in 2014, it was only me, and that's a tall, tall task for one person. Our chief, bless him, Chief Herbert, had the forward-thinking mentality to build a team, and this is what you have. So you have a team that is dedicated to this discipline and addressing these issues. And so I appreciate him for that, especially in my early days. So my career at the Brentwood Police Department started on patrol. I worked my way right next door. I worked as the school resource officer for Liberty High School, worked into special events. I was a member of our SWAT team, range staff. From there, I promoted to sergeant, worked patrol, worked investigations, traffic safety, and special operations. In special operations, it also deals with community events and other special events throughout the city. And then in 2014, I was named as the homeless liaison for our department. So with that, I'm going to let the other speakers introduce themselves, starting with Sergeant Manau.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sergeant Manau, and I've been with the Brentwood Police Department for now, what, 18 years as well. Total law enforcement, 21 years. I started off with, as an SRO, with Lieutenant Peart. Together, I was up at Heritage High School. I've also been a field training officer, a detective, also, what else did I do? I totally forget now. Oh, I've been part of the crisis negotiation team, and I've also just got promoted to sergeant about three years ago and just recently took over for Lieutenant Peart as a special operations sergeant. So tonight, you're going to hear from the expert, which is Lieutenant Peart, because he's been doing it for so long. I am going to learn as much as I can from him so that I, one day, can stand up here and give you the information that you need and you want. Okay? And the next person I'm going to introduce to you is actually who, my boots on the ground, because yes, I am the homeless liaison, but this gentleman here is the one who actually goes out a lot of the time and meets and greets and does a lot of the, like I said, boots-on-the-ground work for us, for the department.
Thank you, Mike. I first want to apologize right off the bat that this will be the hardest part of tonight for you, because these two guys are a lot better-looking and smarter than I am. So this is the hardest part for you guys tonight. I'd also like to say that one of the things you're going to learn about tonight is what's called the PIT count, which is a county-organized homeless count here. And 4:00 came very, very early this morning. Mike and I have both been here since 4:00 this morning, so I apologize for my appearance. But this is me on a daily basis. This is what you'll see when I'm out on the street. I have been with the Brentwood Police Department for almost 13 years as a CSO, a CSO2 and now senior CSO. I will normally be the one that is fielding complaints with regard to the homeless when they come in, whether that's through the city website or calls through dispatch. So I'm normally the one that will go out and make contact with individuals. I will post camps when we are able to do that, and so that's my role in this.
Hello. I recognize some of you guys in here, but for those of you that don't know me, my name is Officer Lindsay Lockridge. I've been a police officer now for nine years. I was previously assigned to patrol for seven, and then I got into this position as the community engagement officer. So how many of you guys follow us on Facebook, Instagram? I'm the one who does our social media. I assist the public information officer. I oversee neighborhood watch, community events, town hall meetings, so anything community-related, that's really my job. And some of that is addressing issues and concerns, a lot of which that we receive has to do with the homeless. Just a little bit more about me is I went to school in Brentwood. I grew up here. I attended Garen. I went to Edna Hill in Bristow. I graduated from Liberty High School. So all the issues that affect you personally or affect your businesses, I get it. I have a vested interest in this community, as most officers do at our department. We appreciate you being here. I hope you get a lot out of it. Please be open-minded, as Lieutenant Peart said, and we hope you enjoy the presentation.
Next slide, Lindsay. Okay, our discussion tonight, we kind of touched on it, so we can breeze through this a little bit, but we're going to talk about the case law timeline. And it's probably easiest for me to explain, because it started right around 2014, when I got into this position. So I've lived it, and I'll be able to explain it the best I can without getting too legally in the process, which should be easy for me. Next thing is, what penal codes and authority do we have? When we go out to an encampment, what are we looking for? What municipal codes do we have? What penal codes do we have? What authority do we have to address an issue if we get resistance? Next, CSO Stanley talked about it. We're going to go over some of the demographics from our own counts as well as the PIT count, right? So what he was referring to earlier was, it's called a PIT count, and it's what's on your sheet that you picked up on the way in. It's called a point-in-time count, and we'll get into it a little bit more later, but this is for 2023. So we just did the point-in-time count for 2024 today, and it takes time for them to develop all their numbers and put this out. So it should come out right around between April and June is when they previously come out. Next, we'll get into the resources and services that we utilize through the county, and we primarily use the core team, the county core team, which is a response team that will go out and contact at the encampment and try to help usher them into either housing or services for employment, medical, dental, mental health, whatever they need. It's that avenue for them to get in, and we are the catalyst to that, to try to encourage them to get into that. But we'll get into a little bit more on that. Cleaner procedures. What are we looking for? What do we do when we go out to an encampment? And so we'll get into the different procedures and the notice to vacate that we'll touch on, that was enacted with one of the case law decisions in roughly 2016. And then, again, our approach to the situation. All right, so anyone can go on the internet, and that's basically what I did. Let's just get a ground understanding of what homeless is. And the housing and urban development definition is, "Any individual or family who lacks a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence," meaning night-time residence, "is a public or private place, not meant for human habitation, living." You can read the next. So that's the basic general definition, so we're all on the same page when we go forward and talk about this situation. All right, next thing we're going to do is get into the timeline, all right? I have four case law decisions up there. One of them's not decided yet, right down here. Grant's Pass-Johnson is likely going to come in the middle of this year. But the main two that we're going to touch on that have really dictated how we address and approach a homeless encampment on the street comes from the Pomona injunction and the Martin v. Boise case. Some of you may be familiar with that. So let me start with the timeline. So 2014, Chief Hanson at the time approaches me, pulls me into the hallway, shakes my hand and says, "Congratulations, you're the new homeless liaison." And he hands me the policy. I said, "Okay, I'm up for the challenge." And I looked at the policy, and it had my employee number as the policy number, so I guess it was meant to be. So I said, "Okay." He gave me a brief rundown. He said, "Don't worry. We don't have that many homeless. We have like two homeless. You don't really have to do anything. They don't cause a problem." Well, little did he know that it would transpire into what we're dealing with today. So in 2014, I became a member of a homeless group throughout the city. Now, the city takes a proactive stance on many issues and are proactive in forecasting potential issues. So we were having a few homeless that were sleeping in the city park, sleeping downtown, and what we do have on hand is a camping ordinance, but we were looking at putting together a no-sleeping ordinance to be able to have some authority to cite if they refused to leave. Another thing we also have is 647E of the penal code, which is unlawful camping or lodging in a public place. So 2014, 2015, we started working on that homeless ordinance throughout the city and then became the Pomona injunction in September of 2016. And essentially, what that did is it gave homeless the right to rest, right? So it gave the homeless at night to be able to lay their head down on a park bench or a sidewalk or wherever they found in a public place and gave them the right to rest without fear of being cited or issued any type of violation. And it came from that case, that case law decision. What it also did in there is it removed, go to the next slide, Lindsay. It removed our ability to continue with that homeless municipal code that we were working on. So we immediately halted, and agencies across the state halted because of that decision. It didn't get rid of 647E of the penal code, unlawful camping and lodging, so we still had that authority if someone refused to move, and it still gave us that option. So what it also did is it said, "Okay, if you're going to move someone, you can't just go in and say, '647E, you got to go.' You got to give them proper notice." So it established a proper notice to give these individuals on the street who refused to leave, right? So we adopted that because of this case law, and it was a 72-hour notice. Technically, if you read the print, it's 48, but most agencies industry standard went to a 72-hour notice to give them extra time, ample time, to clean up, gather their things, and vacate the property. Now, it was very vague. Once they did that, right, so if I post 72 hours, I come back, they vacate? It was very vague on how far they have to go. It didn't say you have to go 10 miles or 1 mile or 10 feet. It just said you had to vacate the area. So it didn't give any parameters, and so that became problematic. What also it didn't do is it didn't give a timeline. So if I posted, they vacated, left, cleaned everything up, take the pictures, we're good to go. They come back the next day, I have to start that process all over again. So it didn't establish a timeline for that. In addition to the notice to vacate that the Pomona injunction enacted, it enacted procurement property procedures and timelines, and it said, "Okay, they're homeless, they have nowhere to go, they have nowhere to store their property. So you have to give them ample notice to leave, and if they have property and they don't have a means of storage, you have to store their property. And you have to store their property for 90 days, and you have to give them an opportunity to come and collect their property within that 90 days. Now, after 90 days, if they don't show up, then we can discard the property." So it gave, the Pomona injunction gave them the right to rest, so it eliminated our Brentwood municipal code. It gave them notice requirements that all agencies had to follow, and then it gave them property storage, so we had to store their property. So what we did is we got containers and put them in the backlot of the police department, and they're designated for homeless cleanups and homeless property collection. So, but we still had authority, right? And so whenever we would go out, we would look at where the encampment landed, right? And we still had that 647E authority, so we still had some teeth to, because we got a lot of refusals, right? A lot of people did not want to go, even when we offered resources and services through the county core team that would come out and communicate with them. We got a lot of refusals, so we used that authority. And on that notice to vacate, we had to create a form. All agencies did, all over the state. So we created that form, and that was the main authority section, unlawful camping or lodging. Simple. Then came, go to the next slide, please, Martin v. Boise. Robert Martin in Boise, Idaho. I'll do my best to go through the case law decision. So it finally took effect in December of 2019, but it was a long, tedious process. So from 2007 to 2012, homeless individuals were cited for sleeping on public, and they used the municipal code and whatever authority they had there. Well, in 2009, I believe, he filed a class action lawsuit saying, "You keep removing me, you keep taking my bed away, but you're not giving me a bed. I have nowhere else to go." And it started its way through the courts and ultimately continued, and it started to enact a shift in their procedures. And in 2014, Boise PD changed their municipal code to what Martin v. Boise turned into was if there was an individual on the street and there was no beds available, they would not cite for that violation. So one example of Martin v. Boise was, they set up downtown on the city sidewalks. They didn't block the whole sidewalk, because then it would be an ADA issue, and they'd be in violation of that, and that would be more authority that they would have to remove them. So they set up on downtown city sidewalks. They were large sidewalks, so they were able to set up encampments and tents, so they weren't blocking. And the city came in and said, "Nope, can't do that. Use that authority and remove them." So the judge came back and ruled in their favor and said, "You can't take a bed unless you give..." For lack of great detail, "You can't take a bed unless you give them a bed," right? And we can read straight from it. They could, Ninth Circuit said, "You cannot criminalize sleeping, sitting, or lying on all public spaces when there are no alternative sleeping space available," and that it violated the Eighth Amendment, which is cruel and unusual punishment. So what that did for us is it really hindered our ability to use 647E of the penal code. So that decision came across all of our desks throughout California in December of 2019. Well, January of 2020, there was a legislative summit. There's legislative summits every year, and they talk about legal updates, case law decisions, new laws in Sacramento, and law enforcement leaders from all over the state go and listen. And this particular case came up, and there were leaders that spoke and said, "If it's public property, open to the public, this is going to remove your authority from 647E. Remove it from your notice to vacate, your posting, your notice to vacate." So we were left with, to be able to use for our authority on that notice to vacate, was trespassing, right? And in our city, we have trespassing on lands that are fenced in, open lands, or trespassing on a railroad property. So those were our only three. Now, where this became problematic is, any area open to the public for public right-of-way, i.e. a sidewalk, a city park, the downtown, I'm sorry, the water park, that's open for public right-of-way. We couldn't use 647E because we didn't have beds available, and we won't have beds available. So it essentially eliminated 647E from our authority, and we have to use 602. Well, I posed this question to you. Can you trespass in a city park? The answer is no, you can't, because it's open to the public. And so it makes it very problematic for us, and we have the telltale sign of Martin v. Boise right now downtown, outside one of the businesses. Individual has a mattress with some, a sleeping arrangement. He's not blocking the entire sidewalk. He's in a public right-of-way, and for that simple reason, we can't move him. We don't have the authority to move them, right? It doesn't mean we can't go out there and evaluate every time, offer services every time, which we do, and we can't address criminal violations occurring, right? Which we do. And so I say, I give you this knowledge of this case law because I want you to understand what we face when we go out. So when we, when we get a call of an encampment in an area, the first thing I do is I want to go out and see where it is and see if I can't build rapport. I know all the, all the individuals on our street. I know all of them by first name. Most of them would know me by first name. I try to build that rapport with them. I try to treat them like people so I get the best cooperation. And for the most part, all of them, when I have posted and I've had authority to post, they know the game, they know these laws, and they know that I have to post. They leave after that. Now, they've come back, as you can see, we've cleaned up behind the Bart parking ride along the railroad tracks, at least over 30 times, and they come back. But it's a perpetual cycle, because they fulfilled their obligation to vacate the premise and come back, and now we have to start that process over again. And if we store the property, they can come and get it. So when we go out, we're looking for, where are they located? Are they on public property or are they on private property, all right? If they're on private property, we have a lot more leeway and a lot more authority, because if I come to any of your front yards and pitch a tent on your front yard, do you have to wait 72 hours and store my property in the...? No, it's private property. It's your domain. You can sign a citizen's arrest for trespassing, and we can remove them that day, right? Where it becomes problematic is public property. Now, I just mentioned the railroad tracks, right? There's several private entity jurisdictional land within our city, so railroad tracks underneath the roadways, the water canal, the county flood district, East Bay MUD, PG&E. There's several of these areas that are private property, but they're a public entity, and so they take the same approach. Technically, they could come in and say, "You're out." But it's not fenced in, there's, when legal gets involved, they recommend we take the same approach with the notice to vacate, procurement of property, and go that route. So what we've done is we've built a rapport and a relationship with these public entities. We've gotten authorization to take enforcement action for trespassing on their property, trespassing only. So it gives us a little bit of authority to take, to take action for a trespass violation on their property for us to enact the notice to vacate and go through this process. So that's why you may see some prime locations underneath Sunset Road at Janeway. We've cleaned that place probably the most, probably 40 or 50 times, and they continue to come back. It's technically, technically not our property, but any roadway underneath, we maintain. So county flood, they, it doesn't, they're not getting the complaints. Not that it doesn't bother them, but it's, it's not high on their priority list. So that's why we got these, these letters of authorization from these entities to take more of a proactive approach in dealing with these situations. Go ahead, Lindsay. All right, our local demographics. This is police officer contact. This is the context that we have, right? These are the most accurate. We talked about the point-in-time. That's a one day. That's a one day, and it's typically in January, when it's colder and they're more situated in their, their place. But we also do our own count, and we keep record and we keep, we keep tabs on where they're going and trying to build that rapport, right? Because I talked about offering resources and services. It doesn't happen the first time. If I offered you, you don't know me. They don't, they don't know me. It takes time. It takes weeks, months, sometimes years, to build that rapport with someone, for them to trust you that you're not going to try to arrest them or cite them or, or just move them to move them. And so these are our contexts. Right now, on the street, we have roughly 33 to 37 living on the street right now, and it fluctuates, and it'll fluctuate even higher in the summertime. But right now, we have some that are staying on couches with, with friends and family. But that, that's going to be, in my opinion, that's our most accurate number. The majority of them are white males. We do have a few single females and some boyfriend-girlfriend partners living on the street, but I assure you, we have no children or families living on the street. We have no veterans living on the street, because we have a plethora of resources and services for those type of situations that we encounter on the street. But the majority of them are white male, and typically, they're single. Most of them are very honest with us, as you can see on there. Most of them self-identify as having substance abuse, and we know of, I can say two that have substance abuse issues with a combination of mental, mental illnesses. And so those two, we've, we also partner with behavioral, behavioral therapists from the county, and we're part of a Met team, which is a call-out team. And I've had that team called out to both individuals, and they didn't meet the criteria to remove them from the street. So although they do have some issues, it wasn't enough to put them and institutionalize them. Pardon, Lindsay? Yeah. Okay, so we'll go over these real quick. So this is a PIT count from 2020, and I don't know if anyone remembers. I remember, because I was on vacation in Tahoe, the time that this dropped, and I got frantic calls from administration saying, "Hold the phone. You told me we had 35, and this says we have 80." So 35 on the street, right? So we have, there's probably more than that that become homeless that we never see, right? The reason you're here, more than likely, is for the individuals that we see and interact with and contact on a daily basis. We had a previous town hall meeting with county leaders, and they talked about having a 53% success rate of getting people into housing. And I'll tell you this, and I'll get into my story later, but I've been doing this since basically half my career. basically half my career, right, since 2014. And I have one success story. I have one success story from someone that wanted to get off the street and wanted to get into housing and get off the drugs. And so when she said we have 53%, I start scratching my head, I'm like, what, what am I missing? How did I miss 53 more people? So this is 80, I said 35, 7, 37. But she started talking about the methodology that they used in the early pit count days was doing the one, the one-time boots-on-the-ground, going out and, and counting numbers. But then it's also referrals, walk-ins, call-ins, going to the shelters. So if they go to a shelter, man, where are you from, Brentwood, that's a tally. So there's, there's individuals that become homeless for whatever circumstance, it breaks my heart to think of, but for whatever circumstance, that never hit the street because they don't want, they don't want to live on the street. And they take the avenue of the resources and services, getting into employment, getting into housing, and you never see them, it never affects. So start at 80, go to the next one, Lindsay. We skipped 2021 because of COVID, it shut down, so we didn't have 2021. So then we jumped to 99 in 2022. Part of the other process of counting in these two, these first two years was counting sleep settings and doing estimates. So it was, it was really high because you'll see, as you, as you can see in 2023, if you can go to the next one, we come back down to earth to what I believe is our true number at 37. So they, in the first two years, they counted sleep settings and they estimated. So if they saw a motor home, that's, that's about six people, that got tallied as six. Oh, that's a four-person tent, that's, so a little bit more accurate and it's been, what I believe is more of our true numbers. Next. All right, resources and services. County has a ton to offer and we have a great relationship with them. We primarily use the CORE team. I got them on by speed dial and they now know me by name. So CORE, obviously you can read, stands for Coordinated Outreach Referral and Engagement Team. They're waiting for my call, my text, or my email to let them know of a location and an individual that I've communicated with, that tells me that they're interested and they want to talk to someone. They will drive out. They have teams all over the county that drive out and respond to my requests and those inquiries. And they like to meet with them one-on-one. They don't want any police contact and try to build that rapport without the uniform there. So they'll come out and they'll offer a water, socks, blanket, kind of help build that rapport as well with them and then try to determine, get to know their, their situation and they'll do checkups on them. What's your issue? See how honest they're going to be with them. Do you have substance abuse? Do you have issues getting to medical appointments, mental health appointments? They will literally drive them to and from, back to the camp, medical appointments to help build that rapport and get, gain their trust and knowledge and get them into resources and services. So they've been a huge help. That's the second form that you guys picked up, likely, with a little card. It's just county 211 and you can get right to the CORE team. And it doesn't have to be a police officer that recommends them. You can call, they take thousands of calls, emails, and they filter through them, they have a dispatch center that filters through them and dispatches them out to the different areas throughout the county for the different teams. So you can call yourself, you don't have to call us, you can be proactive and do what you want to help in that respect. We also have avenues for veteran services, alcohol and drug treatment centers. We also have a rideshare program that we offer. So if county CORE member can't take them, they have a rideshare program that they can get free rides to and from opiate clinics or whatever treatment program they're, they're a part of. There's mobile dental and medical clinics if they, if they choose and want that as an option. And then there's a, a lot of mental health services that we can enact in this. All right, Lindsay? I've talked about it throughout this presentation, we, we take a caring and compassionate approach, right? We treat people like people because that's the way we would want to be treated and that's what we do at Brentwood. We understand that there's many different situations that someone may go through and we, we try to empathize with them in that. However, we do take approach of accountability and we will hold them accountable. Needless to say, if there's a violation or a criminal act, we're looking for the elements of the crime and we will, we will hold them accountable. And if we need to, we will arrest them or issue them a citation. And so they don't get off scot-free. We are servants to the city and this community and we're here to serve you, but as you can hear and understand, we have rules, regulations, policies, and case law decisions that dictate and give us guidelines of what we can and can't do. And so we work within the rules, we work within the law, and we do our best to approach these situations, try to, try to get them off the street and get them into housing, get them into employment. But if not, we have other avenues that we, we can reach on. And we try to use that innovative approach when we get someone who refuses to leave. So I think that ends my portion of the discussion and it will open up for question and answer.
Okay, so we're going to open up for question and answers. I'm going to hold the mic, okay? We'll go one at a time. Just a reminder to everyone, if it's any active investigation or names or things like that, we cannot talk about it, okay? And if it is about someone specifically, we just ask for their privacy. If you don't use your name, you can say an individual and the location, okay? All right. Who's, who's first?
Hi, my question is about the 33 to 37 homeless in Brentwood. I wasn't, I didn't quite understand that you said that their homelessness was attributable to mental health or drug abuse and then there were two that were both, but are you saying there's 35 that are meant, that have mental health issues? I couldn't understand.
No, can you hear me? Is that, is that on? No, so everyone has a unique situation, right? And without going into everyone's history and status, it was, it was just a, an example of the amount of substance abuse that's, that's plaguing the ones that we have on our street. And when I, when I talk about, when I talk about those 35, I'm talking about Brentwood. I'm not talking about Antiochs, Pittsburghs, Concord's, I'm just talking about ours. And it's from personal knowledge and they're self-admitted that they have either alcohol or drug dependencies. So my estimation is 35 have the drug dependencies and two had mental health issues that we tried to get resources and services out. We got the response team to go out and contact them in case they did meet the criteria for being institutionalized and they did not. So that's what I was referring to with that statement. She isn't going.
My question is that, so you suggest that we call CORE instead of calling the police department if we see an encampment popping up? Because it seems like the homeless individuals, they know more of their rights than we do. They know where to go, where to hide out, and it seems like you guys are spinning your wheels. If you have to give them 42 hours and then they, they move for two blocks, come back, it's a endless cycle.
Yeah, so thank you for that and I missed that part of the presentation, right? I don't want to deter you from calling, I want you to call us. I want to know where they're moving to, where they're located and we can call CORE. If you want to, you can call CORE. But I want you to keep calling because every time we go out, we can evaluate a situation, right? We can determine if there's drugs there or if there's any other criminal activity taking place and we can take action on that, right? Simply, unfortunately, the individual sleeping downtown, just sleeping, we're going to go out and contact him, we're going to offer services like we do every time. All officers are educated on that. But if they walk away, just know, he refused it. And that speaks to, I didn't get into my, my, my success story, but when I went out since 2014, I offered every single time and every single time I got told no. And there's times when, this was a couple of years ago, it happened to be that individual, council went out and would talk to him and they know, just like you said, they're smart, they're educated on the law, they know who they're talking to. And he told council, I want to get off the street, I want to get off the, I want to get off the alcohol, I want to get off the drugs, I'll take CORE, I want, I want the help. I got that, that notification and I responded the next day and he told me, no, I didn't want that, I just wanted a free cup of coffee. So they, they absolutely know and they absolutely understand the situation and how they can manipulate it. I hate to use that word, but I don't know any other way to describe it. So no, I want everyone to continue to call, especially if you believe criminal activity is afoot.
Chris, also to your point as well, we also urge you to call as soon as you see it because what we'll do is, and what Officer Stanley will do is we'll go out and just evaluate where it's at, which is a big thing for us because, I don't know if you remember seeing the encampment that came up at the end of Old Sand Creek Road? You can see it right off the freeway, right? And that one, we caught pretty late in the game and trying to figure out, because if you, what we did was we ended up coming up with a way to make that now, because that was a city of Brentwood property, right? But it was, there was no fence around it, there was nothing that said no trespassing on it, right? So what we had to do was come up with a plan to fence it in, put up the no trespassing signs and that gave us the authority at that point to now move them along, okay? So that's why we ask, we urge you, please call, because when we do get out there, we can say, hey, where are they at? Where are they located? Is it the city of Brentwood property? Is it private property, right? And so what happens is when it's private property and Lieutenant Pirt didn't get in too much, but when it is private property, it does, it is, it comes upon the owner of that private property to ask that person to leave. We will be there with you, just so you, all of you who are business owners or even private property owners, we will, we would be there with you when you do make that approach and do contact this person to leave your property. But we ourselves, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lieutenant Pirt, is we can't be the ones that tell them to leave, all right? If, then it becomes at this point, if they refuse to leave, then at that point, we can now arrest them for trespassing and we can step in. But that has to be on your authorization with a citizen's arrest, okay? So like I said, just, on just, it's kind of a long story, just please give us a call and call us as soon as you see something popping up and you go, ah, this person, there's a tent or there's a sleep setting, you know, here, let me call the police and we can go out and take a look at it, okay?
Thank you. I just want to go back in history a little bit. When you're on your way, bow forward, then make a right-hand turn towards Ace Hardware. There used to be very, very tall hedges and I forget the plant name, it's somewhat poison.
Oleanders.
Thank you, oleander. But I remembered that they were, gee, must have been 12 feet tall and then all of a sudden bingo, they got cut down or removed and then maybe a fence put up. But then also situations, certain places that I've heard, because I've been here just 20 years, but I would hear that sometimes you're dealing with people that live out a state that own the property and then that makes it a little bit more cumbersome and maybe that might be just residential houses that are being rented out to others, but sometimes thinking, things can go amiss. I don't know, does.
Are you talking more about like actually seeing a homeless person on a residential property or just them, you know, using a house that's vacated?
Yeah, they could do that. Because I hear some of these stories from Oakland also, you know, that would be over.
Well, we don't, we, I personally haven't seen too much of just somebody like squatting, like squatters in a house. I haven't seen too much, I don't know Lieutenant Pirt if you've seen or, or Officer Stanley if you've seen. I, that really here in Brentwood, I'm sure it does happen in the bigger cities, but here, I, I've been here, like I said, almost, almost, almost 18, 19 years now and I haven't had too many of that personally, so.
I remember once I was walking along to this down floor and I was in the shrubs, I mean, just, and I think they were both as frightened as, as we both were for each other, because no, I don't mean any harm, but it just seems like sometimes people prefer that freedom of living their own way.
Oh, no, for sure, for sure. There's some people who will reject money that you give them. I'm sure Officer Pirt has a good example of that, where we try to give somebody money and they said, no, I have money, I, I, I choose this lifestyle. And we've had that, so, yes.
You were, you were trying to avoid me. Okay, no one has mentioned anything of the cost. What is this costing the city to have this homeless situation?
To clean up? Yeah, so that, that's a good question. So we contract, if you've ever seen a cleanup, we contract with, we have a contract with crime scene cleaners. The cost varies, it depends how large, how expansive it's become. I've had cleanups that were $200 and we've had cleanups that are $6,000. Realistically, that's, that's small compared to some of the other agencies and some of the other, we network with a lot of the other agencies in the county and outside of the county. Concord did one that was $150,000 cleanup. Antiochs are $30,000 to $40,000 cleanups. So I don't like a $6,000 cleanup, but it's a, it's a, it's a wide range from that.
Do you have a number of how many of the 30 numbers that you've counted are on either court or formal probation? And the second part is, what's the level of cooperation or lack of cooperation from private property owners affecting this citizen's arrest for trespassing?
So the first question, I don't have a solid answer for you and I, I don't want to get into anyone's personal, personal status, so, but I don't have a.
I mean, it's an enforcement tool, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. The, to your second question, as far as property owners, we have a lot of good cooperation with the property owners that we, that we deal with. And if there's, if there's a little bit of hesitation, then we get our community enrichment team involved and they communicate with the property owners to get it cleaned up.
I'm wondering if there are sanitation concerns in areas either near or away from water and what can be or is being done about any of that?
Yes, we've had that multiple, multiple times where we didn't, there was a health and safety aspect that we wanted to address and we wanted to get cleaned up. And so we went out and we communicated with the individuals, we let them know we were going to post for whatever authority that we had. But then we also said, hey, we want to clean up, we, we got to get this area cleaned up. And they'll cordon off their area and they say, go ahead and clean it up. And so we've, we've had crime scene cleaners come up and just clean up just trash and debris and garbage to get an area more sanitized until we can wait the timeline and the required times to, to get the encampment moved along.
Hi, is there anything the Brentwood PD can do to protect the students that walk home in the downtown area? I live right downtown, I grew up here my whole life, I went to Liberty, I used to be able to walk home safely and I'm concerned about, there's about maybe five individuals I see passing through the downtown that are homeless and I've seen a few, two of them using substances and I, I don't feel comfortable having my children walk home from school and we live so close to the schools.
So on those cases, I, because I'm also the supervisor of our school resource officers. So I, I unfortunately was unaware of this situation, so I don't know if you've called or made any notices to anybody at the school. Have you, have you let the school know about this? Okay, and also, so we like to collaborate a lot of times with the school as well so that we can make sure that, especially if you inform us that we could talk after this, hey, when, where is it happening? Where are they at specifically? Are they there the same time every day? Because then what I can do is have directed enforcement from our school resource officers and from other officers as well. To be out there, is it usually after school, you say, or?
So my son attends Liberty and there's always three every day right after school in the same general area.
Like that in the city park area?
No, by the, the press.
Okay. Okay.
Um, and then I see two walking around that new hill area, the school. So, I'm concerned, cause we, I, I sometimes need my children to walk home.
Right. Right. And so, what we could do is, like I said, I can do directed enforcement, just do some extra patrol downtown and have just more of an officer presence. Uh, those are, those are things that we can do for you, um, you know? And, you know, try to, if you call, if something happens, I don't know if your kids have cell phones, uh, I don't know what kid doesn't have a cellphone nowadays. But, you know, if they can call, you know, teach them, hey, call. As soon as you see something that you feel uncomfortable about, give us a call. So, alright?
So, what I can say on that real quick, cause I've gotten that question before as well, um, the homeless that I'm familiar with, they have not tried to or followed kids home. They have not abducted any kids. They have not approached any kids. They have not attacked any kids. So, we just, we just don't have that from this element, unless something is unreported or that I'm not aware of. Um, but I know that doesn't solve that problem. Sergeant Manal gave a better explanation for, um, being proactive in that. But, um, I don't know if that puts your mind at ease at all, that we, they're not violent toward other people. There, there's been violence amongst each other for stealing each other's things, um, but not when it comes to that that I'm aware of. That's okay?
Last year, I could see this, this, this whole, the mattress, like, ringing the street. And I just don't know when that would like, that could happen again. And, um, I did report it, that's fine, but it was...
Yeah, call those in immediately. So, we can get an officer out there in real time to address that situation, evaluate him, to determine if he is under the influence of alcohol or drugs, and take action right there. Um, that's a prime opportunity to call immediately and let us evaluate and assess the situation and do our job the best we can.
Do we call you if we see substance abuse on the street as well?
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Okay.
Question, as you build rapport with these individuals that you go out and speak with, during this rapport and communication, are these citizens that we recognize as homeless, are they residents of our city, citizens that are residents? Or are they from neighboring cities, different states, and they end up here? And then my next question is, with the limitation that you have with the right to rest, and our city has a plethora of parks throughout, could we implement curfews so that there is no trespassing between those hours and you don't have the right to rest? Because when others walk dogs late at night, students walking, I think that it imposes a greater risk because that is not implemented. And are other cities following the same protocol that the City of Brentwood is? Cause when we look at neighboring cities like Antioch and Pittsburgh, the problem is exacerbated, I mean, countless times over what we're seeing. And what are they proactively doing or reactively doing?
That was three questions. What's your first one?
I think I got them.
One question?
I think I got them.
One question per person?
I think I got them.
Yeah, okay.
Alright. So, the first one, are they from here? Um, I don't have numbers, uh, like, like I did up there, but a good majority of them grew up in town and are from this area. Uh, we do have some stragglers that come, um, from out of, out of, out of town. I don't know, out of state. I, I don't know of any that are out of state, but we do have some that are, that are from out of town. But the majority of them are homegrown, local, um, Brentwood residents that, for whatever circumstance, are now homeless and prefer to be. Um, they, they tell me that. Um, so, your second question. Curfew, yes. Um, good question. And so, when I had that meeting in 2020, after the Martin v Boise, um, what came up at the legislative summit was, um, I don't remember what city, but it was a central, a central, Central Valley city. Uh, Chief of Police spoke, and he said, come to my, come to my downtown city park right now. You will see eight tents, and I cannot move them simply for being homeless, cause homeless is not a crime, because of Martin v Boise. Remove the 6470 from your, uh, authority section and get innovative, cause they're coming. And so, I had a meeting with our legal, um, department, and we talked about, I said, I said, hey, we have curfews at the parks. We've cited juveniles for being in the park after curfew. Um, but when legal looked at it, and they started looking at that status of homelessness, where are they supposed to go? We are setting ourselves up for failure, and another case law decision, if we cite them for a $30, I, I don't know what it is, but call it $30, um, curfew violation for being in the park after dark. And so, we were still steered away from issuing citations for curfew at parks after darks. And I, and I brought up another one, cause I, I looked at the municipal, what can I use as my authority? Cause they're gonna, they're gonna refuse. They're gonna, they know the laws, and they're gonna push it. So, you can't, and erect a structure in a city park, right? You can get a citation for that. So, I said, okay, what if they erect a tent? That's a structure. Same thing. It's that status of being homeless, that, that homeless piece. And now we're criminalizing for being homeless, and that's gonna get us in trouble. And so, we don't cite or issue, um, based on the guidance of our legal team. And that's where we are.
That's okay. Um, my question is, if you, have you heard of this program that's called Housing First? And does city council help you all with this issue? Are we just all PD that is working on this? Or does city council help you? And would they ever think of Housing First?
I'm not entirely familiar with Housing First. Um, we offer services offered through the county. And we primarily utilize the core team. And you offer that service. The core team has a direct line to H3, which is Health, Housing and Homelessness. And all of the resources and services that the county provides and offers to helping someone get into housing employment off the street. And so, um, the city council is an advocate of us, and they, they do assist us. But I'm not completely familiar with that Housing First.
So, first, I just wanna thank all of you for, for being here and putting this on. I mean, it, I think everybody understands and knows how hard all of you are working to, to keep our community safe. And just the fact that you're leaning into this with this town hall just speaks to this amazing service you provide to this community. So, thank you. Truly.
Thank you.
Um, so, we've lived in Brentwood for five years. And I know that's like an infant speaking to the Supreme Court right now. I get that. Um, we're born and raised in San Francisco, and we know homelessness really well. And as much as I love everything you're doing, and in hearing the question about housing, it's about this much housing, and it's really, people are sick. This is a substance abuse, mental health problem on our street, in our community. And more will come, uh, it, it's just a matter of time. And since it's a medical problem, at the end of the day, it's a county problem. And a couple of years ago, we all paid, uh, we, we all voted for a half-cent sales tax called Measure X, which was supposed to help. And I'm curious if you have discussed that as a way, as a potential strategy to fund something innovative, another project, something that'll help this from a, from a mental health and, uh, really a substance abuse problem. And I think that would be wonderful to hear about.
Okay. So, first off, your first point, I, I would agree with you, that it's a substance abuse issue. Um, as far as the Measure X, I can't speak to that. That's probably above my pay grade, uh, in discussions at, at higher levels than me. Um, so unfortunately, I can't, I can't speak to or provide a, an articulate response to that. But we, we seek opportunities, um, through the core and the county. And just like you, you mentioned, it, they offer a plethora of services to help any situation out there. And so, we, we draw from those and we utilize those as much as we can.
Well, if you guys come up with a project, talk about it, I will show up at that committee and, and push for it to be put into our community.
Alright.
That money is there.
Appreciate you, thank you.
So, Chris, this is kinda in direction towards the homeless population in proximity to the streets of Brentwood. Um, speaking as chairperson of the Youth Commission, and on behalf of youth in Brentwood, a lot of kids like to go to the streets of Brentwood to hang out. Right? Um, I know someone else was talking about homeless in proximity to like campus and stuff like that, near campus, stuff like that. But, um, specifically the homeless near the streets of Brentwood, like kids walking out at nighttime say, you know, you're done hanging out, and you gotta walk back to your house, or your friend's house. And you know, it's kinda feeling like, I grew up in Brentwood, my parents grew up in Brentwood. And I never really had to, you know, be aware, I just, I, you know, I felt safe. And now, it feels like these past couple of years, um, it's really been like, I gotta keep an extra eye out for myself, especially, um, with that homeless population near the streets where a lot of kids hang out. So, do you think that the homeless population in Brentwood, um, you know, presents a risk to youth here?
As I spoke to earlier, we haven't had, we haven't had the cases, uh, that, that they present that risk. Um, I, I totally understand the uneasiness, um, of, of walking home, especially when it's laid out. Um, and I know, and I understand the, the homeless camp that you're speaking of, it is at the dead end of Old Saint Creek Road, underneath the highway. Technically, that's not our jurisdiction. Technically, that's falls under, it's under the highway, right? So, whatever's under the roadway is that jurisdiction. So, the highway is CHP. Um, CHP is an enforcement element, and Caltrans is responsible for the, the posting and, and removing them. And so, they, they've cleaned them up, they do it about twice a year. Um, and, and we assist and, and take part with that. But, um, I, I would just urge you to call if you, if you feel uneasy, if you see someone out and, and you don't feel safe, go back into the movie theater, the store, wherever, um, call for a police officer and report whatever you're, you're seeing and whatever is making you feel uncomfortable. And get an officer out there, and they can evaluate and assess the situation. And at least be able to, uh, put a face to the name that, that you're reporting.
I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna answer that from a mom's perspective. I think that's important here, because I have a teenage son, and I have a daughter in middle school. And I, I will tell you this, as I will tell every parent in here, your children should always be aware. Teach them to be aware. Not in just Brentwood, and everywhere they go. It's unfortunate that we live in this day and age, and I won't get all sad and doom and gloom, but something that I tell my children is, have the self-awareness, to know what's around you. If you feel uncomfortable, you can call the police. And I think children feel, oh, God, I can't call the police, I'll get in trouble. They will never get in trouble by calling us. Even if it's, I'm scared and uncomfortable, and I don't wanna walk to my car. Please tell all your children to call us, anytime. I would much rather walk your child to their car, knowing that they're home safe, than something happening. All of us would, we're all parents here. So, please don't hesitate to call us, parents. Have those conversations, not just being aware at streets of Brentwood or downtown Brentwood, being aware wherever they go with friends. Making good decisions, making good choices, paying attention to their gut. That's what I tell my kids. Pay attention to that gut feeling. If it doesn't feel right, then it's probably not right.
Thank you, Lindsay. Well said.
Hi. Um, this is kind of a Housing First question. But the, the people that you know unhoused, would they take a room, no strings attached, they just have a place to live? A, a, you know, private with a door place to live?
Great question. And that would change with the seasons and the times and different circumstances. And I've, I've, I've seen that change. But to put it bluntly, I've asked that question. I said, if we built something here, would you go? And they said, no. I won't go. It's lucrative on the street. No, it's, so, from what they've told me, right? Uh, from their words, to, to my ears, um, is they don't want the responsibility of employment. They don't want the responsibility of, um, a house payment or, or rent. And that they've kinda built their own community on the street. And they like hanging out on the street with nowhere to go, no, no care in the world. And they get three meals a day, every single day. This community is very generous and very giving. And they come and give them food every single day. They give them cash, they give them tents, they give them sleeping bags, clothes, uh, and they, they look at me, um, one gal said, Chris, look, look at my cart. She goes, I have so much food in there, it's rotting, I throw most of it away. She goes, I got cash in my hand. Why would I leave? And I didn't wanna get too much into the story, but Sergeant Manal's story, we had an individual that years ago was living behind our police department in the field. And he was, he had a tent. And one of our sergeants went out. And he was a great guy. Um, we never had any calls on him, never, other, like, problems. Um, didn't suspect him of doing alcohol or drugs. He, he kept to himself. He just liked his little oasis behind the PD in the field, back there. And the sergeant went out and said, hey, and he, he offered him a hundred dollar bill. And he looked him in the eye and he said, I don't need your money. He goes, see that tent? Someone brought me that tent, that sleep bag there, someone brought me. When that tent rips, someone will bring me a new one. He goes, I get, I get a check from the state. He goes, if I have to use a bathroom or wash up, I'll walk down to Power Mart. If I wanna get some food, I'll walk down there. But most of the time, I don't have to pay for it, because people bring me food, money, clothes, items, all day long. So, he's like, keep your money. He needed, he didn't, he wouldn't take it. Yeah. Yeah. So, not all of them, not all of them want that, right? And maybe, maybe I, maybe I talk about my success story, right? And it was, um, it was a, it was a boyfriend-girlfriend couple, and not using any names, but they were behind the, the bar parking ride. And it took me like seven times, I kept going out, kept going out, kept going out. I said, hey, they were building up too much property. I said, I'll store it for you. You're, you have too much, and people are coming and stealing, I'll store it for you. So, I built that report, built that report. And every time, she said, no, I don't want it, no, send Core out. Core said, she doesn't want it, she doesn't want it, she doesn't want it. Well, she lost her kids. And I gave her that opportunity. I gave her that avenue, right? And it was Christmas time, and she wanted to be with her kids, and she couldn't, cause she was addicted to, uh, drugs. And she, she said, after she got out, cause, cause she got off the street, and I didn't see her for, for months, um, a couple of months. And then she came, and, cause she wanted to collect her property. And I said, what, what happened? And she said, I'm in housing in a, in another city. And I said, that's great, what, what, what happened? She said, I wanted to see my kids, you gave me that, that avenue, and I finally took it. And you always treated me like a person. You always were caring, compassionate to me. And I trusted you, and I trusted that number that you gave me, and I took it. And she's on her way, and she's been clean and sober for eight months, at the time. Um, um, but I said, okay. So, everyone else that, that I talked to back there tells me, oh, Core doesn't do anything, they don't offer anything, it doesn't work. And she said, Chris, that's wrong. Core does everything that they say they will do. And that's why I love partnering with them. They don't want it. And she said, I didn't want it, Chris. I was hooked on the drugs. I didn't want it until I needed it. And as soon as I asked, it was boom, boom, boom. And they, they got me in. She said, they don't want it. And everyone else that says it doesn't do anything, they don't want it. They don't wanna get off the street. And so, that's my one success story in almost nine years. But it was a good one. It was a good one.
Okay, we got about 10 more minutes of questions and answers, okay? You look like you really have a, a good question.
I'm a retired school teacher. I, I have a degree in psychology, and then I went and got a, a multiple subject credential. And I'm retired, I've done it for many years. And what we need to do is offer mental health services to the families when the kids are little. We have to get in there where we can make a difference. We have to get in there where we can make a difference. If you wait too long, it's too late, the odds just build up against them. But if you can get in when they're young, and I taught, I ended up staying and teaching young children, if you can help those families by making mental health services available, most of them can't afford it, that's the crux of it, they can't get to it. If you can make it there and if we can change our attitudes about how we look at mental health and people with issues, we all have them, it's everywhere. We need to not make it a, I can't think of the word. Where people can hear me, get in there now while they're young, that's what I believe we have to do.
To that point, let me just make one note, if you have not seen the documents, it was put together a couple of years ago now, but you can Google it on YouTube. Watch Seattle Is Dying, make that mental note, watch Seattle Is Dying. And there's, there's avenues to combat this issue of mental health, substance abuse and they do a great job putting on that documentary. And it talks about what Rhode Island is doing and it's a multi-pronged approach, right? It's mental health clinicians, it's law enforcement, it's the judicial system, it's the courts, it's several entities coming together and it's not an overnight fix, but it's a great watch, it's about an hour. I highly recommend it.
Hi, thank you, I have two questions. The first is, what did you guys do under Sand Creek and O'Hara to block that area off? And the second one is, you mentioned that there were two of the homeless in our community that were, that have mental illness. And I think that maybe all of us have seen them and what is the criteria for behavioral health to come in and take them to a mental facility?
So, underneath Saint Creek, let's start there, underneath Saint Creek and O'Hara, that was one of our heavily problem areas that I dealt with for the first four years as a homeless liaison. We stayed on top of it and we created an area that was not susceptible for living anymore because what they were doing is they were cutting into the ground and making platforms, which was potentially causing issues for the structural integrity of the roadway. And so, they paved it and put the large cobblestone. And so, paving it and that, you can't dig into that and you can't, it's uncomfortable. And so, since we did that project, two years ago, about two years ago, maybe a year and a half ago, it's been, knock on wood, it's been good, it's been clean. They've gone down there a couple of times to hang out, but they don't set up down there anymore.
It has lessened that issue a lot. Are we on? It has lessened the issue quite a bit. Unfortunately, they're still able to go down there and some of these people that we deal with are very ingenious, you'd like to see them put that to good use. And they're able to still make some inroads into the lower portion and dig a pit that they can stay in. So we do find them down there periodically, but not nearly like we did. Right, right. I try and get there once or twice a week.
So, to your other question, for them to be institutionalized, they have to be a danger to themselves or others and/or have some major psychiatric issues going on. So, though they may have some mental health disabilities, they're more independent and they're not dependent on care of someone else. So they're more independent and they're on their own, they're coherent, able to articulate themselves and they didn't meet it. But we tried.
Brand new question. Are there any concerns about the new bridge, the walking bridge that we just built?
I was waiting for that question to come up.
That was Mike's question.
I didn't really prepare, it's not, I mean, here's the thing, it's not finished yet. We, I didn't know, I don't know when it's gonna be finished. Ron and I did go out there not too long ago and we walked around and kinda wanted to scope out where we believe would be a good place for an encampment to set up. So, we will be talking with the city, I do partner up with the city, Public Works, the administration as well, to see if we can come up with how we're gonna make sure or prevent an encampment from coming up there. I did, it does look like a very nice place to set up shelter. So, I was like, wow, this is a beautiful area, but it's also gonna be a beautiful shelter. So, yes, we're gonna look into, we've definitely, like, we've put it on our list to make sure that we go out there and keep checking and making sure that we move forward and work together with the city to hopefully, because the way, like I said, with Sand Creek, the way we did it was we fenced it off, we put some no trespassing signs, we then made it legal for us to have them moved along. But other than that, we could try to think of some ways, come up and maybe think outside the box and try to prevent that from happening.
So, it is gonna be city Brentwood property, it is gonna be public and open and have a right-of-way access, right? So meaning you could walk in there. So we may have to get creative with a fencing project and fence off that area, sign it and then it would not have right-of-way, even though it's city of Brentwood property, it's fenced, signed and we would have a little bit more authority. But let's be positive, let's not think that it's gonna in court that, but it is beautiful, yeah, it's beautiful, so.
Okay, so, one more question of the night, I know you all have a ton of questions. Okay, I'll get to you, sir, I'm sorry, did I miss you? Oh, I apologize. Okay, well, two more questions of the night, okay? We have our business cards out there, so I know some of you didn't get all your questions answered, our apologies, but we'd probably be here till 10 o'clock at night. We appreciate and value all your time, so if you do have more questions that pop up, you have our email, please feel free to email and give us a call.
Thank you. I just have another question about jurisdiction, so all behind Target and JCPenney's, is that CHP and Caltrans? And then the panhandling that now goes on inside the store, because I've been tapped on my shoulder, grabbed on my arm, probably three times in the last month and a half. So I'm just curious, is that Brentwood or what city?
Behind Target and JCPenney, that's city of Antioch, yeah. There's, so there's an embankment along the freeway and there's a chain link fence, that's the border from Caltrans, CHP and city. So if you follow that chain link fence, yeah, it's at the base of that embankment to the highway. So that would be Antioch, CHP. And if you go down to where now you're in Brentwood, that would be Brentwood, CHP. So yeah, unfortunately, it's not our jurisdiction.
Okay.
All right, last question.
Welcome, everyone. And for the record, this was planned for me to be the last one, so, don't worry about it, no, I'm not taking any offense. Before, God, I actually had a couple of questions, but you referenced Boise and it does talk about E, but F seems to still be available, which is the drunken disorderly.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. I've heard people here tonight talk about they have seen open drug use. When your fellow officers go around, I am sure that wherever they go, they see people obviously intoxicated or holding drugs or using drugs. So, you can answer this question if you want regarding, are you really enforcing that? But that's not the question. My question is, using your numbers, that 75% of the folks who are currently homeless are drug abusers. I would think that especially if you enforce the drunken disorderly, that you would make some headway. And the ugly fact is, because I've been, I've dealt with all ends, I have a success story, I have a failure and I have almost me. So, yeah, I get a wee bit. But my point is, as you said, the folks in this environment, they know how to play the game, they know the rules. They also know that if you break, crack down and all of a sudden, drug users are sitting in the tank over the weekend because they can't be seen till Monday, they'll either clean up and say, hey, I need help, or they'll come out and say, I'm not staying here, Brentwood's being too tough. So my question is, would you like to answer any of those questions?
Yes, and I agree with you, more enforcement can have a multitude of effect, but I don't wanna speak for all those officers in each and every situation because it's not a mandate. Sometimes we do stress a zero tolerance approach with some situations, some individuals and try to get compliance the best we can. But officers do have discretion out there as well.
But to be fair, isn't that a mistreatment of equal protection under the law? I could walk down the street totally inebriated, get stopped, might get cited, might get pulled in, but if I were to say, or if you didn't know, for the few people who don't know who I am, I could say, oh, I'm homeless and then maybe turn a favor. So that doesn't seem like equal protection under the law. I understand discretion, but the law's pretty black and white and it's that gray area I think really needs to address. Not here, you are doing what you can do, I know it's a city attorney, I know it's a county thing, but here in Brentwood, there are avenues.
Yeah, I just go back to discretion, right? And I understand your point that it's not equal enforcement of the law, but that is part of the officer's ability on the street is they can take action on crimes that don't require an arrest, it's not a shall, and if they're trying to build a rapport with someone or for whatever reason, if they decide not to, unfortunately, to your point of a hard and fast letter of the law every single time, it's not gonna have as much effect, but sometimes it does. Sometimes it does build that rapport. If maybe they are inebriated, but they don't quite meet the elements and they're trying to work with that person and build that rapport, it's just a different approach.
Also to address that as well, I want to just make sure you understand that even if they're, just because, I mean, if they're drunk in public, 647F, and we come upon them and just because they say they're homeless, it's not ali-ali-oxen-free. I want you to understand that as well, it's just, we, like Lieutenant Pierce said, we do have discretion. And the homeless are not the only ones that we practice that discretion on as well, right? I mean, we're out here at the city downtown during the weekends, we deal with people at the bars and I know officers, hey, they just wanna get this person home, sometimes they're with a loved one, do they have every right to take that person to jail who's drunk in public? Yes, they do, but if their loved ones are right there with them, we're most likely gonna opt to, and I'm not gonna speak for everybody, but they're gonna opt to have that person go home with a loved one or get a ride home. You know, sometimes we have to think about what's in the best interest of that person or in the community.
But if they're, it's recidive, at some point, they're not going to get a ride home. At some point, right? I mean, how far, and again, I understand discretion, I'm not trying to.
It's gonna be case by case, it's gonna be situational and each officer has, we trust each officer to be rational decision makers out on the street and make an informed decision of what they want to do in the situation. So, I wanna thank everyone for being here, I appreciate the support.
Chris, can I just jump in there real quick?
Sure.
Real quick. Just so you're aware, drunk in public, 647F and drug possession, those types of crimes are misdemeanors. I transport as a CSO those individuals and I can tell you that on occasion, they are released from the jail on a site release before I leave the jail. So, your statement of you put somebody like that in jail and they spend the weekend, they don't spend the weekend.
To be fair though, enough times right in the back of your car and getting cited and released, I am sure that's a deterrent.
I can tell you, one of the individuals that we've spoken of tonight who stays downtown with a mattress, I personally have taken him to jail three times. Several of my partners have taken him many more times than that and it hasn't corrected his behavior.
All right. Again, I appreciate everyone coming tonight, thank you so much. And a round of applause, please, for Officer Loffridge for putting this together, communicating with everyone and all the work she did, thank you. Have a great night, enjoy your night.